19th, 2019, I call this meeting to order and again ask the Kirk to please call the roll.
Josie Cameron.
Present.
Carbonaro.
Present.
Deanie.
Here.
Gabrenia.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Ranky.
Present.
President Wallace.
Here. First item on our committee at the whole meeting this evening is Community and Economic Development Committee Chairman Gabrenia.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item on our agenda is to discuss the property located at the northeast corner of Sterns and Munger Roads. There is discussion of it being developed for two 207,000 square foot warehouse buildings. The petitioner is requesting several things. A preliminary, final plat of subdivision, rezoning from the OR and SR5 zoning districts to the I-2 EDA zoning districts, site plan review for lots one and two, special use permit to fill two wetlands, and a variation to reduce the required number of parking spaces, i.e. lot one. So I would ask Roberta to clarify anything that we need to and present this for discussion.
Okay. Thank you, Trustee Gabrenia. As you stated, the petitioner is requesting a preliminary and final plat of subdivision to subdivide the 28 acre site at the northeast corner of Sterns and Munger Road into three lots. Lot one and lot two, both just under 12 acres, would each include a 207,000 square foot warehouse building with lot three proposed for detention. They are also requesting to rezone the property from the OR SR5 district to the I-2 EDA. This rezoning request is consistent with the future land use plan map and the West Bartlett Road corridor plan, which designates these parcels as mixed-use business park. They are also requesting a site plan review for lots one and two, and the proposed 207,000 square foot warehouse buildings located on each lot would be oriented towards Sterns Road and would have two office areas proposed within each of the buildings. The buildings would be painted gray with blue accents. I have a color rendering here. And constructed with precast concrete wall panels. The maximum building height would be just over 41 feet, which meets the zoning code requirement of 45. And the buildings would actually be mirror images of each other. The site plans depict passenger vehicular parking along the south and west property lines for lot one and the south and east property lines for lot two. And the loading docks would both, for both lots, would be located along the north property Two curb cuts are proposed along Sterns Road and one curb cut is proposed on Munger Road. The eastern curb cut on Sterns would be a right in, right out only, with the western curb cut on Sterns and the access on Munger providing full access points. Both Munger and Sterns Roads are under the jurisdiction of DuPage County Highway Department, and at this time, staff has not received comments from the county agency. We expect to shortly, and I know the petitioner is working with the county on those. And no curb cuts would be proposed on Linfield Lane. Cross-access easements are shown on the plat of subdivision to allow trucks to access both sites from the Munger Road and the western Sterns Road curb cuts, as well as to allow all passenger vehicles access between each of the sites. Site plan for lot one identifies 222 parking spaces, and the zoning ordinance requires 234 parking spaces. Therefore, the petitioner is requesting a variation to reduce the required number of parking spaces on lot one by 12, so 234 to 222. And then lot two identifies 246 parking spaces, and that actually exceeds the zoning ordinance requirement by 12. So it's, the total parking for this site is 468 spaces. They meet that zoning ordinance requirement because of our subdivision ordinance regulations. It states that each lot must meet their own parking requirement, and therefore, the variation request is before you. And they would do a shared parking agreement and would be recorded between the two lots. A special use permit is also requested to fill two wetlands on the site. Both wetlands are considered isolated and are currently being reviewed by our wetland consultant. They are asking for a modification from the subdivision ordinance to waive the requirement of installing sidewalks along Munger Road and Linfield Lane. However, the staff had asked the petitioner if they would be agreeable to installing a 10-foot wide bike path along the Sterns Road right-of-way, and they said, yes, they would be. And it is shown on their plans, and they would connect to the existing bike path segment at the Munger Road intersection to the west and the east, and an existing sidewalk east of this property. Lot three is shown for detention, and the, this is currently, the stormwater management report is currently being reviewed. The revised traffic impact analysis was just submitted and is currently being reviewed by the village's traffic engineer and DuPage County. And the proposed roadway improvements include opening the existing median on Munger Road to allow a left turn movement out of the site, prohibiting left turns onto Munger during weekday peak hours, and adding an eastbound left turn lane at the western full access point on Sterns Road. And finally, the remaining plans, the landscape photometric and engineering plans are currently under review by staff, and we do recommend forwarding the request to the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Plan Commission for further review and to conduct the required public The petitioners are here tonight, too, and the property owner.
Does anyone have discussion?
I just wanted to make a comment. The, I never felt that that SR5 zoning was appropriate in that area. In keeping with the character of the business park immediately to the north, I couldn't see SR5 being adjacent to that and also along Stern Roads. So this plan, the way it's presented this evening, you know, I'm leaning towards saying, yeah, that I like it. I definitely would like to get some input from the ZBA and Plan Commission. But I never saw SR5 zoning there, even when we were there. As a matter of fact, I'm going to tell you, I believe that one day we'll be confronted with zoning changes to the south side of Sterns Road where we currently have ER2. The buffer that we have to the east with the current zoning, the SR2, the PUD, they have a large buffer there, you know, which is fine. You can't, you can't see any of those residential homes from, from the, from any of those backyards in the, or the rear yards in the industrial complex. And by the same token, you can't see any of the industrial buildings to the west because of the berm there from their backyards. But I was never happy with that SR5 zoning, and I'm glad that somebody showed us evening to take a different look at that. So, thank you.
How far is the curb cut on Munger Road from the intersection of Munger and Sterns? I couldn't quite make that out.
We have, Ethan, why don't you step up?
I'm Ethan Frisch with B3 Companies, 7325 Janes Avenue, Woodbridge, Illinois, 60517. Can you say the question again? Which curb cut?
Sure. What is the distance between the curb cut on Munger Road in relation to the intersection of Munger and Sterns?
It's about 3250 feet.
Will there be a turn lane for that?
There's no left turn allowed into that.
No, if you're turning into the lot on Munger?
Going north?
Yeah.
There will not be a turn lane.
Will there be turn lanes on Sterns Road for those curb cuts?
There is a shoulder, an eight-foot shoulder. We're actually widening all of Sterns Road, providing central median throughout the whole, our whole frontage, as well as extending the median on both sides of Sterns, as well as putting a curb on the north side of Sterns.
Do you know what the distance is approximately of the retention area away from the, is it an SR1 district?
So the edge of our building is about 500 feet from the closest house, and we have a rendering that we drew up. We have about 25 feet that we need to set back to even start our berm, and then we berm up around 10 feet to try and block that view as much as we can. But that's about 500 feet back.
Thank you.
I think it makes sense to have that raised median. I think if I heard you right, because I've seen some creative maneuvers by large trucks in the Brewster Creek Business Park. So anything you can do to help discourage them from making a left, I think would be a, would be very, it would encourage safe travel.
Sterns is striped. I'm at a new striped median, because right now, there's only about like three feet in between there. But Munger will, will continue to have the raised median.
I am glad that the petitioner is going to put a bike path on Sterns Road. I like that. But I'm also looking forward to seeing the comments that the ZBA and the Plan Commission bring back to us, so.
I'm thrilled at your building there.
Too.
Absolutely. I don't know how fast or quickly we can move this forward, but whatever we can do to expedite it, I think it'd be in the right way to handle this. This is a great location for us to be filling up. It's good for our EAV. It's good all the way around. And whatever we can do to help, I think we need to push it along.
They're spec buildings, all right. That should be not a problem, because he's asking for preliminary and final, so.
And as spec buildings, do you have any idea who you're marketing to?
Hi, Aaron Martel, Logistics Property Company, One North Whacker, Suite 1925 Chicago, Illinois, 60606. So we designed these buildings, I'm the developer and project manager for Logistics Property Company. The short answer is, we designed these buildings to capture as much of the market as possible. There is a trend in Brewster Creek Business Park with food and consumer products, and we envision that continuing. We've already had some initial interests from some food users from the Brewster Creek Business Park for their expansion. And I believe that, again, it'll probably be either consumer products or food. That's generally what we're seeing in the Midwest right now.
How long would a project like this typically take?
So Brewster Creek, so the predecessor company that I was with was Ridge Development Company, and we did two buildings in Brewster Creek Business Park, BC1 and BC2, we called them. And that was Winheer and Brolite, and then Clark Packaging. So Brewster Creek won. We bought the land, built the building, leased it, and sold it in nine months. The difference between Ridge Development Company and Logistics Property Company is we will hold these buildings for a long term. So weather permitting and getting out of the ground efficiently, we anticipate maybe 10 months in terms of construction, and then we, you know, roughly have a year of lease-up, and then we'll hold these for, you know, 10 years.
That's good.
Any additional questions? I think we should move this on.
Thank you for being here, gentlemen.
Thanks, Roberta, for your help.
Moving on to our next item on our agenda. Manny Rafidia, on behalf of MMAJ LLC, is requesting some, has some requests in regard to property located at the northwest corner of East Devon Avenue and South Bertaux Avenue. And I would defer to Roberta to walk us through this, please.
Thank you. The petitioner is proposing to renovate just under 32,000 square feet of the existing building and the former grocery space and create a new 22,000 square foot entertainment center, which would be oriented west towards the interior parking lot, and three new commercial spaces.
Roberta, for a, one second. At this point in time, I think I need to recuse myself from this discussion.
Okay.
You probably should step out, it's cleanness, but.
How about I sit in the front row?
Please continue.
Hey.
Thanks for, just for updating the meeting.
The three new tenant spaces would be oriented south towards East Devon Avenue, and would include a 4,100 square foot wine and liquor store, Arminetti Wine and Spirits, a 3,900 square foot restaurant, Fire and Ice, and a 1,300 square foot space for future retail. This would be the third site plan PUD amendment for the site and would be to create a conceptual commercial building pad for a possible grocer or banquet facility, and to add parking in the southwest corner of the parcel where grass currently exists. Petitioner has stated the area for the conceptual commercial building pad will not be subdivided or sold off. This is difficult to see. I'm going to keep up the existing plan here. The petitioner proposes to modify the current shopping center name from the Bartlett Plaza Shopping Center to the Streets of Bartlett. And the proposed renovations include removing the existing metal roofs and replacing them with EFIS and adding accent lighting on the facade to update the building elevations. The three new commercial spaces facing south will have new windows, doors, and a sidewalk and outside dining area where a brick wall currently exists. In creating the conceptual commercial building pad, 159 parking spaces would be removed from the existing site. However, by converting the existing grass area in the southwest corner of the property to parking, approximately 30 parking spaces would be added back to the total number provided. A variation is being requested to reduce the required parking spaces from 525 to 406. Access to the site from Main Street and East Devon Avenue along with Bertaux would remain the same. However, internal circulation would be modified just slightly along the south elevation of the new commercial uses, where the drive aisle would become a one-way in order to accommodate a sidewalk and outdoor seating. Three additional variations are being requested for the proposed monument sign. I have a picture of that. Do have some elevations here. So here is the existing, and here is a proposed elevation change. This is the south, looking south towards Devon, the three new commercial tenants. Building elevations. And here's the floor plan of the interior of the entertainment center, the 22,000 square foot entertainment center. And then this is the proposed sign. And if I could just say that the petitioner has really worked with staff. We, as you recall, you saw the original sign concept that he was proposing, and I asked him if he would be willing to have a sign that would architecturally match the new changes proposed for the building, and he has agreed to that, and that's what this is. And it's substantially lower and smaller than what he originally came to you with. He is asking for three variations associated with this sign. A 20 square foot increase from the maximum on this street, the maximum height, or the maximum sign area is 100 square feet. He's asking for 120. A two-foot increase in the maximum permitted 10-foot height requirement to allow both signs to be 12 feet in height, and a two-foot reduction in the required five-foot setback along East Devon Avenue. Staff is working with the petitioner to ensure the sign locations will be safe and clear visibility will be provided, and their final location is yet to be determined. They are asking for a number of special use permits for the site in its entirety. So packaged liquor sales, which would exclude, be excluding within 100 feet of the school, serving alcohol with wine tastings, also excluding within 100 feet of a school, the recreation and amusement establishment, live entertainment, the banquet hall facility, outdoor seating, and pet daycare. So the special use permit for the packaged liquor sales would be to open an Arminetti Wine and Spirits. It will primarily sell wine, approximately 70% of their sales area is for wine, and they also would like to serve alcohol with wine tastings taking place. The area designated for beer and liquor is substantially smaller than the area devoted to selling the wine. As part of the proposed Fire and Ice Restaurant, the petitioner is requesting a special use to serve alcohol, and they would have a full kitchen, and it would include video gaming. The petitioner also requests to have live entertainment at the restaurant. The state law requires video gaming establishments to be a minimum of 100 feet from a school, and this Fire and Ice Restaurant would be located 200 feet from the school, so they meet that requirement. The special use permit request for the 22,000 square foot recreation amusement establishment would include family-friendly and, be family-friendly and catered towards children's activities, including roller coasters, trampoline park, jungle gym, and other child-friendly amusements. This area will be connected to the restaurant in order to provide food to their patrons and alcohol to the adults that are within the amusement establishment. The petitioner is also requesting a special use permit to allow outdoor seating for the entire shopping center in front of any of the commercial spaces if the future tenant so chooses. And a perimeter, perimeter fence around the outdoor seating area will be required if alcohol is to be served. Petitioner is requesting special use permits for a banquet hall facility and pet daycare. These uses are not currently proposed, but the petitioner is requesting the special use permits to have the option to attract these users to fill any vacancies. And a detailed review of these uses would be required by the staff at building permit submitter. So staff would have an opportunity to take a look at parking requirements and any other items that may come up during that review. As part of the redevelopment improvements for the shopping center, the petitioner proposes to replace the existing parking lot lights. This was also a request of staff, and he was open to this suggestion and is showing these downtown light fixtures now in the shop, proposing in the plans for the shopping center. And it would tie this center to the existing downtown improvements. A site plan will be required to be submitted for the commercial building pad once additional details are finalized for its development. If there are no additional special uses or variations being requested, this will be reviewed as an administrative site plan and will be submitted directly as a building permit application. And all of the plans are currently still being reviewed by the staff, and we do recommend forwarding it on to the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Plan Commission for further review and to conduct the required public hearings. And if you'd like, I can go over a little bit, I know it's a little hard to see here, but just to refresh, this is a difficult plan. So this is the commercial building pad right here. These are the 159 parking spaces that would be removed. This is the grass area where the 30 additional parking spaces would be added. This is the facade that would change, that's a brick wall right now, that would change to have windows, sidewalk, outdoor seating here. And then this is the family entertainment area here.
I would like to start by congratulating Mr. Rafidia and the staff for a lot of detail and a lot of work. I, for, I can't speak for the entire board, but I would say for myself, I had some concerns, and you addressed them, and I appreciate that. I think that you put a lot of thought in, into the proposal, and I would ask my fellow board members if they have concerns or questions.
I just wanted to make a comment, also, pretty much in keeping what Trustee Gabrenia has just said. You know, I've served on the Plan Commission for a number of years, and I've had the opportunity of looking at a lot of different developments that came into the village and different plans and whatnot. And I have to tell you, when I looked at this and I went through it, I really have an appreciation for the time and effort that you and staff put together and bringing this before us this evening. I thought it was an extremely well-thought-out plan, and I like the concept that you have in here as far as planning for future uses of the documents of the tenants that will come into that, to that, to the strip shopping center. And they don't have to come before us on a piecemeal basis. We're covering it all in one action, which I think is fantastic. I really, I'm impressed with the efforts that staff and you put into this. This is a very, very well-thought-out plan. And I'm also curious, as we had talked about before, to see what the ZBA and Plan Commission would have to say about this. Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Dinges. Has anyone reached out to Metropolitan Water Reclamation District of Greater Chicago? Do they need any more room over there for their lift station? I know there's going to be some lift station work going on.
We have not approached them about needing additional room. They actually have, we feel, maybe more room than they need to the north, and we were actually going to try to see if we can get some of, if they don't use it, if they would be allow, you know, allow us to kind of shrink their fenced area. But as you know, we're still in discussions with them on the improvements that are actually needed at their lift station. But right now, the plan would be to keep within their site, as far as I know.
I want to thank Mr. Rafidia again. I apologize for missing the last hearing, but I was at the previous one, and I'm still as excited as I was back then. Obviously, you're make, you're willing to make a tremendous investment in the Village of Bartlett and specifically our downtown. So thank you very much, and I appreciate your patience with the process.
So I would recommend, if there are no other comments, that we move this on to the Zoning Board and Plan Commission for further comments.
Can we expedite this, too? So after it comes back from the commissions, we just put it on the agenda?
Anybody have any steps, Roberta, that we can expedite on this? I think I would echo the sentiments of the board in that petitioner's been very patient and flexible in his original thought pattern and allowing us to voice what we'd like to hopefully see in that center. We're remiss if we didn't welcome the Gorsky brothers here this evening, so we're like, glad to see them here, and it'd be an interesting transition, so anything we can do to expedite.
Thank you.
I want to add one last thing before we move on. Let's keep up the efforts to see if we can't get another grocery store in this village. Thank you.
All right.
Let us know if you need us to twist any arms for you.
We're on the do-not-call list at Aldi, so.
All right, are you ready? Carry on?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, Manny.
Thank you, sir.
Good luck.
The last item on, on our committee is very, I find very exciting. John Castilla has entered into a lease agreement with the purchaser of the building located at 113 West Railroad Avenue, our beloved historical tap building. The building had been a bar and grill at this highly visible intersection for over 100 years prior to closing and going into foreclosure in 2017. He has been diligently rehabbing most of the interior. The staff has been working closely over the past several months in an effort to bring this new concept with a nod to the history of the villages, history of the village back to life. And the applicant has provided documentation of over $132,000 in expenditures on his application, which reference an increase in $8,000 in additional electrical upgrades since his original application, which was made in late November. He has requested a maximum BETA grant in the amount of $50,000. Staff has recommended a $35,000 grant, which the EDC recommended in favor of at its December 10th. 10th meeting. I think this is a great use of the BETA money. I am very excited to see the progress you've made, and I would propose that we review the petitioner's request and forward it on to the board for a final vote, and I would open that up to discussion.
I concur. This is absolutely no-brainer. When do you think that you'll be able, you'll open?
I'm shooting for the month of April.
First of April?
Not the first, it's not that particular day, but I definitely would like to see my grand opening.
Well, there's all kinds of rumors going around, okay? I can tell you that right now. It was for Christmas, that it was the Super Bowl, and, you know.
Most of them revolve around ribs, I think.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, I've had a lot of goals, and trust me, if anybody wants to have this place open, it's more than I do.
I hear you, man. I agree.
Not as a criticism, as incredible amount of anticipation and hopefulness that it's going to be as wonderful as those of us who have lived here for a really long time remember it historically to be. I have two questions for you. First, can you pronounce your last name?
Castilla.
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 And second, would you like to tell us about what you're doing in there? Because it has been quite the buzz.
Yeah, well, thank you. I'm going to pass these around and let you guys.
While you're doing that, I just want to comment also, this is a no-brainer as far as I'm concerned. This is exactly why we have the BETA count, why we set it up.
This is just fact-finding, because I'm nosy, to be quite honest.
Well, my number-one goal was to bring the building back to its original found, original of being the tap, and that's why I didn't name it anything else. I rehabbed so, well, I put it this way, I was here seven months ago when you guys approved my liquor license, and I've aged five years since, so that is the truth. What I discovered is, once I got into opening up walls, opening up just the cooler itself, you're talking decades of Band-Aids and decades of repairs done incorrectly or noncompliant or just quick fixes for decades, not to mention the foundation underneath, those electrical boxes. I'm surprised that building's never caught fire, to be honest with you.
Wires were so old, they didn't even have cloth covering?
What is that?
Wires were so old, they didn't even have cloth covering on them?
They did not.
Did you find Jimmy Hoffa?
No, you know what, but he might be in the front part of the bar, because that is the scariest part, which you have to crawl to get to. So this has been a project, this has been a serious project. This is by far the most challenging project I have ever done, and I hope when I pass in life, that is my legacy as well. What you have before you is me trying to bring back the history of the photos that are inside that facility that has been there for one hundred and thirty-six years. That is a professionally-done, well-thought-out wrapping that will go on the bar itself. Those photos will be displayed of all the parties and all the, from the beginning of the person who in 1880 built the bar, the tap in 1880. I want to say circa, let's keep that in mind, circa 1880. So that is kind of where I'm going with this. I wanted to give it back to Bartlett, I wanted to bring it back to the history of Bartlett. I want to let everybody know who's third and second, third and fourth generation, that there is a lot of history there. I have uncovered so much from crawling underneath that portion of the bar in that photo, finding crates, crates from the original beer company there that I have had professionally rehabbed for display that are over one hundred and thirty-six years old, you know, with the original stamps, and some of them even have the original, I even found the original bottles in some of them. So I'm assuming when they were building that building, they were having a good time drinking beer at the end of their day, and they were just throwing those bottles right underneath that foundation for years. So I was able to get a couple of good ones and have them cleaned up for, and I just have to figure out now where I'm going to display them. Ask away. I mean, I've lived there for seven months, basically. I have visited the village multiple times with multiple people. I've met a lot of people, I've heard a lot of stories, and it just made sense for me to call it the Bartlett Tap. It just made sense. I've heard some good compliments on my sign, it fits the building, the slogan, "We're past meets present, we are the present." Those photos you see are the past, you know. I have done as much as I can possibly do, and I have ideas still. I just need to get open, and then I will see you guys here again in two more years for my next proposed steps. I want to bring that original look back to the original look of those two front windows, back to what it looked like when it was built. That is my goal, is to try to restore that again, that front, but that's down the road. For the record, I'm very interested if something happens to the lot next door to me, if that does not fruition into being another building and it comes back to being back-up-for-sell or forbid, I'm very interested in that. I just wanted to make that clear. It was part of my business plan when I bought the building, to be honest with you. I didn't know that that had already been something that was negotiated and done, but I'm very interested in the space next to me for a larger outdoor patio in that location, if that, we get to that point.
So I have another question. So the concept we all like and we all appreciate, restaurants also are about the food, and that's what's going to make it successful, and that's where our investment is going to go as well. So tell us about that.
Well, I've heard a lot of everything, what it used to have and what the lines out the door were, so I've taken all that into consideration, and I've been working diligently with sous chefs, a regular chef, a neighborhood current chef here already in business here who's very interested in teaming up with me in that back portion of the kitchen, and one thing I've done is, that's something that I have really, not only all the details I'm putting inside, but the menu is going to either make me or break me, and I'm not going to plan on having any sort of bad menu or low-grade menu or anything of that nature. I need it to be what I think this village, the expectations. And that's kind of, I've listened, if I leave those doors open in the summer when I was in there working, minimum five to twelve people would walk in a day, minimum, and I would hear a story about the menu and about a party or about somebody being married or somebody, something. So I'm working diligently. I know one thing on the menu piece, I am going to have some vegetarian type of, a couple things there, because I know there is some sensitivity now with particular foods and ethnicities that will come and dine, and so I will keep that very, and I will have a children's menu as well, so that is also part of it as well. I'm not going to have the gigantic menu, it's not going to be four pages like Cheesecake Factory, but I'm definitely going to have something respectable that the village can be proud of again, so that's been my plan.
With that said, any additional questions?
Nope. Will there be, will there be video gaming at this establishment when you open?
There, I have an application for video gaming. It has already gone, I don't know how many steps down the road with the Illinois Gaming Board, but my application is in. I built a section away from those front windows for video gaming, towards the back. You cannot see it from the front, you cannot see the machines. I even asked the gaming company that I don't want the tops, you know, that looks like that Vegas look. I'm okay with those not being there, so it doesn't kind of reflect over the wall that I've built that is probably ten feet high, and I made sure that it was compliant with the Illinois Gaming Board where it could still be visible from the bar staff. So you're going to see a little bit of a change interior-wise. It's not as long as it used to be because of video gaming, but video gaming is private behind the wall.
I don't know if staff can try to help me remember a little bit, but when we discussed the BETA applications, they weren't meant to go to video gaming establishments, and I understand this is a restaurant and bar, but it is going to have video gaming, and I know we talked about it. I don't know if it was a restriction we put on the applications?
We never added it as a restriction. The intention was for projects, when we presented, it was primarily to fill vacant properties like the former grocery store and like the Bartlett Tap. There was a brief discussion among the board, and I, by my recollection, it was not necessarily wanting to apply it to those small cafes where they don't put in the full kitchen and where they're just like a twelve-hundred-square-foot space, but never a restriction against somebody building out a full restaurant and rehab project like what Mr. Castilla's doing.
Thank you for refreshing my memory.
You're welcome.
What do you need to do in order to open? What's left?
Well, my final walkthroughs, really, in about two weeks or less than two weeks, my final walkthroughs from all the inspectors and the fire marshal. That has not, my fire marshal task has been my largest task, we're talking, you know, red conduit throughout, you are going to see red conduit, you know, in the ceilings and down the walls, but that has been, you know, going through, you know, for them to follow the blueprints that were compliant with, that was approved of the engineers, and, you know, that took some time. And also, you know, my delay was, my delay was the holidays. My delay has been me turning myself into a general contractor, managing twelve different companies coming in on different days, different times, or disappearing for a couple weeks, you know, and then coming back and giving me one day and then gone for a week, you know. It's just, it's been a very interesting education that I have, I've gotten in that particular field, so I've educated myself on a lot of projects, but that's been my major.
Okay. I was initially very skeptical, because, and it's not entirely fair to you, because it has to do with the Lucky Jack site, because we had an owner that basically sat in the building, and it's very clear to me that you put a tremendous amount of effort into this structure and preserving the history and money, the incredible amount of money that you must have spent is beyond imagination, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
I think I'd like to see you open before we vote on the, on the BETA grant.
Mm-hmm.
I think that that's important for you, it's important for us, if we're going to invest taxpayer money, it needs to be in a business that finally does reach that finishing, that finish line. So I, that's just my perspective.
I would have to agree with that. I don't know that there's really that, I don't agree with it, because he's already put $132,000 into it. He's not going to walk away from that, I don't believe, so you guys can wish your opinion, but I don't agree with that.
Just for reference, some of the prior applicants came in earlier in the, in the process, several months before they were able to open, just wanted the board to be aware of that, as you consider this.
But that's not the issue, is it? That's not really the issue. The issue is not opening for an extended period of time.
I don't, I don't.
And that's, but that's my point to you, is that this is a little bit different than building out the Indian Express site, and, but, and I'm not doubting you, and I have, I have all the faith in the world, it's hard for you not to take this personal, I don't mean it that way, I have all the faith in the world that you're going to get there, but for me, that's just, that's my opinion, that's my vote, and that's, that's where I am, and I'm looking forward to you opening up and going in and having a burger and checking the kids' menu out and all the work you've done.
Okay, you know, I definitely would hope that you do show up, because there is definitely a lot of passion that I've put in my time and
Absolutely.
and into that, and my own personal money, to be honest with you.
Oh, yeah?
There's a lot of my own personal money, and you wonder why I've taken so long. Well, GoFundMe page, why don't we start one up or something? Because I've put a lot of time and my own cash into that building, and can I be honest? What I know now, had I known a year ago, I probably would have passed that building up when it was foreclosed on, and that is the truth.
What's your timetable for opening?
April, April 15th, basically. I wanted to make the tax, last day of taxes, first day with me.
Tax time.
I mean, that was kind of my gimmick with my marketing team. My marketing team is here, my director of marketing and web design is with me as well, so we are leveraging social media. I mean, it's, it's been overwhelming, to be honest with you, trying to run all these projects, but April.
I can appreciate the amount of work he's put into it as well, and I think even though it's taxpayers' money, inevitably, we're going to probably push it forward and give you the money, so I'm good with moving on with it right now.
Yep. Well, we have a few, a little bit of mixed emotions about when to vote. When would it come up, next meeting? Is that the plan generally?
It could come up next, as soon as next meeting is.
Okay. I think it'd be a good idea to probably sort this out after, after the fact here. Sort this out after this meeting, I mean, we've got some differences of opinion, we're not probably going to solve that right now. We have three weeks, right? I would suggest we move it to the meeting and discuss it during the interim.
How does the building look, Brian? Have you been through it recently?
Put a lot of effort and money into the electric alone. Yeah, the inside, it looks a hundred percent better. I mean, it's clean.
So then, you know, we'll put on the agenda next time and get a status update and talk about it then?
Yeah, we'll vote on it.
Sounds fair.
Okay.
Thank you for being here.
Okay.
Appreciate the detail.
This is the top of the bar with all these pictures? That's really neat. Awesome.
Are those both the same?
Yeah, this one's just blown up on the larger end of this one.
Very cool.
And these are golden.
Very nice.
Mr. President, that is the last of the Community and Economic Development Committee items.
Thank you, Chairman Cabrenya. Finally, in our committee, the whole meeting this evening, we under Finance and Golf, Chairman Daney.
Thank you, Mr. President. The only item we have this evening is the 2019-2020 budget review, and Todd is going to.
Did we have some good jokes tonight?
Sorry, I don't have any good jokes prepared. Maybe some will come to me as I'm working through the slides.
Turn this page for me.
Thank you. All right, it's budget, budget time again. We're doing things a little bit different this year.
Thank you.
In the past, we would send out the proposed budget, you could see it, we would send it out normally about the 22nd, 23rd of February, then I would do this overview the first week in March, then we'd have a special meeting, second week in March, another review meeting on the third regular meeting in March, but we're doing this, we're moving this up so that we can have both meetings in March for review without having a special meeting in between. So that's why, a little different, we're going to go over this, and then we will send out the details at the end of this week is the goal, to get that out to you. So with no further ado, I will get going. I hear the ice storm is not hitting until one o'clock, though, so we have a lot of time.
See a news for you, I have a hook. If you think you're going to be up there till one o'clock in the morning, you're going to be pulled off that stage.
Sorry, I'd never, I'd never make it. Okay, just a reminder that this is more than, more than just the figures that we're going through, it's a policy document, we've got our financial policies, we've got goals and objectives. Oh, I did forget to mention that we did email this presentation on Monday, and I'm sorry we weren't able to get it out earlier, but in case some of you are pulling that up, you'll be able to catch up to me. And also, as part of the communication guide is the budget message that starts it out, and I know that Paula has been putting extra effort into that budget message this year, so be sure to read that, it's right in the beginning of the proposed budget that you'll receive. This is just the calendar, we're getting towards the end of the calendar. We start back in, back in the first of the year, May 1 of our fiscal year, and we start working through the capital budget, which has already been approved. We're presenting the proposed budget this week, then we'll review the budget, have our public hearing, and adopt the budget, the first meeting in April is the goal. The budget needs to be approved by May 1, the beginning of our fiscal year. So first of all, where the money comes from, our total revenue in this proposed budget is just under $72 million. It shows that we've got property tax and other taxes, which include income taxes, TIF taxes. TIF taxes. Also got our charges for services, that's mainly our enterprise funds, water, sewer, golf, parking, interest income, borrowings, if we have the IPA loans or developer notes or bond issues, and then other revenues that includes licenses, fees. And where it goes, our total expenditures this year are just over $76 million. And it, this pie chart just shows Public Works, Public Safety, our General Government, Golf, Debt Service, Capital Projects. Capital Projects is down quite a bit from last year, it's still a big chunk of the overall budget, 35%, though. There's two parts to this budget. We already passed the capital improvement plan, and that first year of that budget is what's rolled into this, is the capital part of the budget. And this graph showing the operating has generally been flat, operating budget. What's been increasing here is the debt service. Part of that is including the new police station, the bonds for the police station. Also, as it starts to ramp up, we're also going to be picking up debt service in the, in the water fund. Here's a picture of our capital budget, you can see last year was quite a year. We had over $50 million in capital expenditures in regard to the police station and the water So this year, $49 million. And the operating side, we're down to $26.5 million in the capital. A little more detail on the, on the revenue side, $72 million total. First of all, we're talking about the property taxes. That's 16% of our total revenue, $11 million. This is just our, our general, police pension and debt service. 35% of the general fund is from our general corporate property taxes and the police pension It's up $216,000, that was due to the increase in the police pension levy this last year. Again, total property taxes from all the districts, the villages responsible for it and collects about 10% of that. Our estimated cook rate, 1.12 per $100, and the paint rate is 91 cents a hundred dollars. Every part of the tax rate is from our levy and from the EAV. Here's a little graph just showing where our tax rate history is done. You can see how as the EAV fell, our tax rates went up. Now, as the EAV is starting to creep up, our tax rate is coming down a little bit. Our equalized assessed value is not quite where it was in 2010, but it's been rising for the last five years. We're just under, or just over the $1 billion mark again. Another major revenue is the income taxes. Last year, we had the struggle with what the state was going to do. They had reduced our income tax distribution by 10%. We based our budget on the fact that they would probably stay at a 10% reduction at the last minute after we already approved our budget. They gave 5% of that 10% reduction back to us. So that was a difference of $300,000 last year. So we're expecting, based on the Illinois Municipal League's estimates, another $150,000. So our budget for income taxes is $4,150,000. Last year, our budget was $3,700,000. So that's where the $450,000 comes from. So out of the 4.95% that we pay on Illinois State income taxes, that's, the village gets a little bit less than 6% of that now. Another major revenue is sales taxes, we talked about earlier tonight. We did have a little bit of a blip the last month where it was 10% lower than the previous year at the same month. We're expecting, our estimate this year was looking right at around $2,460,000, $2,460,000 before it, we had this last blip. Our, our budget for next year is right at the same level, $2,400,000, $2,460,000, sorry. Just a 1% increase from last year's budget, but pretty conservative as far as where we're at right now and where it's, where it's trending, just to stay kind of level. We do have one sales tax, one small sales tax rebate at this time, and that's for the Ace Hardware. Home rule sales tax is the new tax that we approved last year. The total budget last year was $1,333,000. This year is increasing just based on receiving it for 12 months instead of 10 months, $1,600,000. Right now, those taxes are, have been slightly over the, over the budgeted amount, but we're going to be watching those as, with the other taxes. Again, that's only on the general merchandise, it's not on the food, and it's not on medical devices and other things like that. This tax did replace the utility, natural gas and electric taxes. This is the internet tax we were talking about, the local use tax. Last year's budget was $1,080,000. We're projected to receive $1,195,000 this year. And based on the Illinois Municipal League's estimate, it looks like they're saying we're going to be more, more, closer to $31.70. It's distributed on a per capita basis, so the state collects all of the internet taxes, all of the online taxes. It's at the base state rate though, 6.25, not at, doesn't include our home rule sales tax, just the base, and then it's distributed on a per capita. Back in 2015 is when Amazon started paying that tax. They've had some decisions recently where everybody's supposed to be collecting the tax. So that's part of the reason why it's, why it's going up. Telecommunications tax is still one of our major taxes. It has been declining since 2011 when it peaked at $1,400,000, it's down to $750,000 now. The decline has slowed though, so it, it had been losing 10% a year. It has slowed, so we're budgeting $750,000 this year. Real estate transfer tax is another one that kind of goes up and down. We increased the budget last year, and this year, we're going to increase it just a little bit more to $750,000. We've had, we had four big commercial sales this last year. They totaled $88,000 together, just the four commercial sales. One was for over $50,000, just one transfer stamp. So it, this can go up and down based on sales for investment purposes or other purposes out in the, out in the business part. Here's our gaming taxes slowly going up, we're estimating 200 and, about $211,000 this year. We've added a few more machines, so we're budgeting $215,000 this year. This is what is being used to fund our, our BETA applications. Building permits, we increased it a little bit last year, up to $690,000, but we're at $400,000 right now. It's, we're going to be closer to $600,000. So we've reduced this budget, $600,000. Again, this is one that can go up and down, and it, the economy, we don't want to rely on this for our operating costs, so that's why we tend to be a little more conservative on the building permits. This is it for the, the general fund major revenues. Some honorable mentions, cable TV franchise fee, it's down to $680,000, that's another fee. It used to be $715,000, we're down to $680,000 now. Our garbage franchise fee, $150,000, also goes into the general fund. Again, our development is down a little bit, we're expecting 10 residential properties, new properties this year. Last year, we were expecting 25, so it has slowed a little bit. Our commercial permits, we did, we're down $200,000 compared to the last previous year, so that's a big, a big chunk of why property tax, I mean, the building permits are down. Moving on to the enterprise funds, our, our service charges for water, that's mainly the only, or the major revenue for the water fund works, this is in related to the, the rate that was increased, so up to $12 million now. Revenue is based on consumption, all, just on consumption, the water fund, you can see in this chart where it has steadily been going down. Last, last year, it did increase maybe 1%, 2%. That was about it. So the only thing that would, right now, bring that up would be commercial uses as some other commercial properties move into Brewster Creek with the, with the food service production. That's been an increase in our water service. While the consumption has gone down, we've had to raise our rates, and this charge shows the water revenues. Our rates have gone up 85% over the last three years, starting with this May 1, 2019 new rate. Sewer charges, $6,075,000. Again, we've been rate, raising these, $1,130,000 per year with the latest rate increase. And these are also going towards our expected costs with the Divine Avenue excess flow and then the rehabilitation of the Bittersweet plant. Different than the water rates, the sewer rates are based almost 54% on our, on our flat fee. We have a base fee and then we have a smaller fee per 1,000 gallons. And so Cook County, Cook County, we just, we just collect the sewer, send it over to the wastewater. MWRD Midwest Water, sorry, MWRD. And then DuPage County, we do have to treat our own water, so that's why the rates are higher in DuPage County. Kane County, we send it over to the Fox River Water Reclamation District. Golf charges, those are a budget to be down slightly for the golf program, a $30,000 decrease based on, based on the trends in the golf industry. They're budgeting about 2,000 less rounds this coming year. Food and beverage is expected to be up based on, based on book sales that they already, or booked, booked events for next year. A little more detail on the operating expenses, it is expected to be 2% increase from last Again, those include our debt service payments. The different categories for our operating expenses, our personnel service, which makes up 48% of our operating expenses, contractual services, commodities, other charges, miscellaneous capital outlay. Our other charges include our, our debt payments, liability insurance. Again, golf is 5%, debt service 7%, Public Works 37%, Public Safety 34%, and General Government, 17% of our operating expenses. Short review on the general fund, our beginning balance is estimated to be $11 million. That's our, we went over our six-month review. Our revenue was up and our, and our expenses were down, and so that's helping our general fund beginning balance be a little higher than we were expecting at this time last Revenues are, again, up 5%. That's based on income tax being up with the distribution from the state and also our sales tax and our home rule sales tax. Budget expenditures in the general fund are $20 million. This is just up 2% from, from last year. Ending balance is projected to be just under $11 million. We, we are showing, expecting to use $319,000 from the general fund balances this year Central Services is where our information technology coordinator and his staff and now the GIS staff works out of. They work for all of the departments, so we call that the Central Services Department and allocate parts of their expenses to every department. We've been low on the balance in the general fund, I mean, in the Central Services Fund at $130,000. Transfers for this year are budgeted to be $1,379,000. So that comes from all the departments based on how much service they require, how many computers they have that need to be maintained, and other services that are provided by the IT department or GIS department. Proposed budget is $1,433,000 with ending balance of just $80,000. We did increase our transfers, and so the increase from the general fund was $157,000. Water, sewer funds, just about $30,746. Machinery and equipment is purchased out of the Central Services Fund as well, and that budget is up to $234,000 this year. We will be those in detail as we go through the departmental budgets. Vehicle replacement is also kind of like a central services fund. It's, it's where we collect the funds through the year so we can replace the vehicles without taking loans out for them. So each year, we transfer funds from each department, not necessarily when they purchase the vehicles, but so that the funds will be available when they'll be ready to be replaced. So our beginning balance in the, in the vehicle replacement fund, $1,200,000. We've been transferring $593,000. Our proposed budget this year is just $675,000. Estimated expenses for this last year, $426,000. We do have one large dump truck that was ordered back in September that hasn't come in yet, and it doesn't look like it's going to make it by the end of this fiscal year. So sometimes the, the big dump trucks, $135,000 variety, take a while to get here from when they're ordered. So in line to be replaced this year are eight vehicles, I think two more dump, dump trucks are, are in, in that, two mowers and three cutting units. There is only one patrol vehicle being requested this year. I know we went through the evaluation process last year on, we were going to replace especially patrol units, Public Works vehicles, so they put off a lot of those and just have one coming in this year. Again, some highlights of this budget, we did go through the whole health insurance evaluation process. We are expecting to be saving over $400,000 this year from, from that process, just from the new health plans, the way people have changed, changed plans. So that was very successful. There are no other new fees or, or taxes, going to stick with the flat general levy. Non-union wages are set at 2% again this year. Total of two new employees. Two new employees are being added. We have some reductions, some increases, so the net difference is two. Again, we have more water, sewer rates included in this, and then the capital budget, $21 Last part of this is our, is just our fund balance review of the major funds, the general fund, water, sewer funds. Again, the general fund is estimated to end the 18, 19 year at just over $11 million. For our fund balance policy, we try to have a minimum of at least 25% of our operating expenses plus payables and other restricted funds. So we will end this year above the balance, right at around 45% of our expenses. 19, 20, we should end up at about $10,800,000, we'll still be slightly above, and then we will be working. We'll still be slightly above, and then we will be working our way down. So I'm projecting that the taxes will be level, but we're showing a 4% increase to, to operating expenses in this chart. Fund balance in the water fund. Currently, we should be ending at about $2.6 million, which is within the range of the policy. In this proposed budget, we did not receive the IEPA loans for some of the transmission lines. So we're using about a million and a half of fund balance to complete some of the transition to the Lake Michigan water. And then, as we move forward, we're still pretty tight. Right now, this is showing the continuation of the water main replacement program. That's one area that is gonna be either put off or other additional sources of revenue will be provided, either through a bond issue or something like that. But those are some areas that are gonna be tweaked in the next couple of years.
Let me stop you there, because when I, when I saw the, the fun, some of the fund balances there, they concern me. So I understand why the water fund balance is, is out of whack here. But what's, what's the, the game plan past 21, 2021, 2022 to bring that fund balance back up to where it needs to be?
Yeah, and that's where we, right now, we've been funding everything through rates. We've increased the rates 85% right now. I know when we went through the water source program, they were talking about double rates, so we're still under that. There are, right now, the, the rates will cover operating, the debt service, and about a million dollars of infrastructure per year going forward. And so this is showing, we, we've been doing, or we've been putting in our capital budget, 1.2 million, 1.3 million for the water main replacement program. So if we're gonna continue that, then we'll need to find other sources of revenue, or we'll have to, have to cut back on that.
Okay, so, so then, do we anticipate looking at the water rates every year to help bump up that fund?
We, we are gonna, right now, at this point, though, we haven't, everything hasn't been finalized as far as what our loan payments are gonna be. We're still estimating a little bit on the higher side to be conservative, to make sure we'll be able to cover our payments to the DuPage Water Commission. And on the sewer side, the sewer side has, has been low for the last few years.
Yeah, yeah.
And so we are, with, with these rate increases that, that are meant to cover loan, debt service payments as well for the Devon Avenue and for the Bittersweet, pretty much is breaking even right now, is going forward in this chart, as far as that goes. I do have the fund balance policy minimums going up to reflect debt service payments. I mean, those are fixed costs. It should be reflected in the minimum po, policy. So that's why the minimum policy is going up. The cash balances are staying pretty level there. So that is a, a quick overview of the, of the budget. I know there's a lot of numbers there. We are sending out the detail. The will be, in the line item detail, it shows every line with a few years of history. You can see where we're going. It's got the, proposed budget will have each fund and, and a little summary on where the balance should be ending. So we look forward to discussing more detail in the departments. But if you have any other questions now, or you need to send questions later, that's.
On, on page 10, when you're talking about the revenue review, under property taxes, it says a 2% increase from 18, 19 budget. But, but you're not, we're not increasing property taxes 2%. That 2% increase is based on the 4% increase in EAV.
I, I think the 2% increase in the property taxes came from the increase to the police pension levy part of the, part of it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it was, it was roughly $200,000 last year. And that's, that's a 2% increase in the property taxes. Police pension levy goes into the general fund, and that's part of the property tax total. And then it's transferred to the police pension fund.
Okay, thank you.
When will the final numbers be in for Lake Michigan water projects?
We still have a couple of projects, but.
We have, next meeting, I believe, we'll have the Lake Street Pump Station, which is one of the last projects that we have. And then, as these projects come down, get closer to finalizing, whether they're within, you know, where we end up with the original number, knock on wood, they're coming in pretty good right now. So we're hoping that we'll, we'll be able to bring those numbers down and make those reserves look better.
We're still on schedule for, for May for Lake Michigan water, then?
The weather hasn't helped. But we just got an update from a contractor on the receiving station. He still shows May 15 as the substantial completion date, which means we can pump water.
Thank you, Dan.
Yeah, we, we are still waiting. The DuPage Water Commission will accumulate all of their expenses as well, and then they'll have the loan payment plan established that time as well.
They're, they're on budget, too?
They are, they are, yes. All right. Reserving my questions for when we go through the real budget. Yes, okay, wonderful, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Tom.
That's it, Mr. President.
All right, thank you to Mr. Treasurer. You know, everybody's so excited talking about numbers. At this point, we will be adjourning to executive session to discuss the sale of Villa Joan property pursuant to Section 2C 6 of the Open Meetings Act. So I call this meeting adjourned to executive session. Need a motion?
Yeah, we need a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Submove.
To executive session, and then we'll come back and adjourn. Move by Trustee Danny, seconded by Trustee Carbonaro. With a click, please call the roll.
The motion should reflect the section of the Open Meetings Act, 2C 6.
Trustee Cammer?
Okay, so the motion.
Trustee Cammer?
Cammer? Meeting's act.
Submove.
Second.
Trustee Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Carbonaro.
Carbonaro?
Absent.
Vince?
Danny? Danny?
Yes.
DeBrenner?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
We are adjourned to executive session.